For Fortson, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of space to build as was stated earlier. We're kind of landlocked over there. We are making five new classrooms at Fortson, but at the same time, there's still not going to be anything close to what we need. So we'd, you know, one of the options, one of the things that came up as far as being a proposal is to find a property to create a separate ninth grade academy in the east and where it was as close to Fortson as possible. That'll alleviate numbers for 2018, 19, and beyond at Fortson High School and will help with, you know, the total enrollment number there staying well under 3,000. Again, you take away the ninth grade without changing boundaries, you're talking about anywhere between 700 to 800 students. So that'll bring Fortson's number down to 2,100, 2,200 as far as at that high school. Some other options that we talked about that will make an impact, but not necessarily, you know, change a whole lot when it comes to populations, and these would be options, like moving STEM school to Smith. So if we moved the STEM middle, STEM middle school to Smith, we'd have to invest some money in upgrades and renovations at Smith. And but what would, what that would do is would enable us to create more programs at the Michael Berry Career Center and given our students some more opportunities to do things. However, we can't make it mandatory that students go into those programs just because those programs would be different than the traditional high school diploma program. We already offer flexible scheduling options. We can offer those more, promote those more. The other thing we could do is go back to mandating, you know, a zero hour or seventh hour. But again, if we just offer them as options as we do, there's no guarantee that there's going to be a change in the, in the populations in either of the high schools. Some more is continue to expand our current programs, dual enrollment, co-op opportunities. And, you know, again, these are all options, but they may, may not change numbers just depending on how many people, you know, use those as options.
Before you go on to the next slide, I think the next slide deals with a different issue. If we can just, so today, you're looking for some direction, is my understanding. And I guess in terms of the other board members, the Dearborn High, what you indicated, if we wanted to get moving on Dearborn High, it might cost anywhere between $1 million to $3 million, and it would be ready in a year's time. What would you have to do? I guess it's hard to say go ahead and do it without knowing final numbers. And so the question is, when can a bidding RFP go out, get some bids on it, so that we have a real understanding of what, what it needs to be done there? Because even if you move the Russ Gibb Center, from what I'm hearing, and do some other things, Dearborn High is still not large enough to house its students, and it doesn't look like the population's going to go down low enough where a few, just a couple of classrooms is gonna take care of it.
Yeah, any construction project of this magnitude, you're gonna have to get an architect involved to make sure they go out and design the actual, you know, roughs design, the actual outlay of how it would look. And with that, they would actually do a cost estimate on that basis, and would have to go to the state for approval. So before we can even send RFP for the final cost, the architect would estimate it based upon the design.
And how much does the architect cost?
They could maybe, you know, five to $10,000 just to design that, as being on hour and time basis.
So we would have to be pretty much committed to wanting to move forward.
Well, I think, I mean, five to 10,000, if we're talking a couple million dollars, it's really hard to say, let's go forward. I think investing five to $10,000 and at least seeing that, I mean, it's-
Well, we don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice. I think if something that we need to do before we can make the decision.
Call it ballpark, 200 students over capacity at Dearborn High. You want to call it 150 to 250, just call it 200. If you're assuming 30 students in each classroom, you've got seven classrooms right there. We're talking about adding eight. So I don't know that there is a lot of choices at Dearborn High. We need more room there.
And I, sorry, Trustee Barry?
Do we have a clue what the numbers would be at Dearborn High if we weren't busing students in on the other side of town?
I mean, I can, I can give you the exact number, but not right now. But yes, I can figure that out.
I mean, that's the students coming from-
Yeah, you're talking about like the students coming from Stout and from Eunice right now? If we were to take them out of, that's not a problem. I can get that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the board okay with them going ahead and hiring an architect to get that, or do you-
Just so we can have an idea.
Yeah, well, it would be, no, 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 it would just be a five to $10,000 investment so that we can make an informed decision. It wouldn't, it's certainly not a commitment.
You know what that reminds me of, and I know Trustee Lane was on the board, we keep bringing up the Howe Building. And when we first vacated that land, that building, there was an offer that came, I think you were part of this discussion probably, Dr. Maliko, there was an offer that came in at $600,000. Just to give you an idea, I would be okay moving forward, spending $10,000. I said, what? Realtor in the area, and I know what that's worth. And people said, what do you think it's worth? I said, it's probably worth about $3 million. The next day, the offer came in at $800,000. Well, we know what we received for it, but the question was, do we go out and spend the $3,000 to do a commercial, get a commercial praise value? And that came in at $3.2 million. Fast forward, we just closed on it, and it was 2.4 minus the liability of almost a half million dollars. So I would have no problem whatsoever in order to help us, if you need to go that way, you know, at least we have that option.
And to make it very clear, we're not committing to adding eight classes right now. We're just saying that we can't commit to anything if we don't know how much it's going to cost, or how it's going to look, or at least begin that process.
And by doing this right now, we're not delaying either.
Right.
Correct.
We're starting down. We can still stop if we need.
Exactly.
I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, I don't either.
And then the other item was the boundary lines, the study of our population. And I think that I do agree with a lot of the people who have spoken, a lot of the communications we've had. I, before we decide whether we invest in a potentially 70 to 90 million dollar school, or we just do a ninth grade academy, or we change the boundaries, if there's going to be a population growth greater than projected, then it's not solving the problem. It's just waiting for another problem to occur. And so I think before we do an undertaking of this level or magnitude, we, we really need to hire, once again, it's a couple thousand dollars, as Trustee Barry indicated.
Get the best guests possible.
Exactly. Get the best guests possible. And then at that point, we can, once again-
And on what is that? Are you talking about population?
A population study.
And thank you. So maybe we should call that question right now. Are we, is everybody in agreement that we should do that for $10,000, or whatever it is?
So we've got two, right.
The two proposed-
We mentioned two, there was two mentioned in this proposal. You also mentioned SEMCOG. So are we saying anything particular that we're gonna go with one versus none?
How does that, how would that work?
SEMCOG doesn't do the study. The two, the two would be Plant and Moran, or Middle Cities. Those are the two that are approved by the state of Michigan and by Wayne County RISA.
And it would be somebody familiar with our community and our city, and seen all the trends, and maybe talk to the realtors.
Yeah, that, that I don't know. I know they do talk to realtors, well, at least Stanfred does. I've never worked with Plant and Moran, or Middle Cities, but Stanfred, they do talk to realtors, and they do get an idea of, you know, they'll go, they'll get their numbers from the Census Bureau and that type of thing.
And you mentioned, you mentioned that, you know, with, with all the expansion with Ford, I personally have sold two houses in that area, young families, they have like, you know, baby, or just, just got married just recently. And I'm just one of 400 realtors so far. It's gonna be very important. Quick question, if you don't mind.
Oh, of course.
What is our current count at the high school level now?
It's-
You mentioned, you said that was close to-
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand is what the number I remember?
Yeah, it's a little under 7,000.
A little under 7,000. And how are we gonna go from 7,000 to 6,439 by next fall? I know we have a-
No, 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 I'm sorry. 6,100, I thought, is our number. Dearborn is at 2,054. Fortson is at a little under 2,700. And then Dearborn is at, I'm sorry, Etzel is at 1440.
I, I remember seeing something last week that we're capped at around 6,000, and our count's around 7,000. Is my correct, or was I seeing something?
Our, we're projected to get to about 7,000 at the high school level.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Right.
Okay.
I guess going off Trustee Barry's comment earlier, even if they don't, I guess we don't know what Plant, Moran does, or Middle Cities, but I think that it need, they need to be speaking with the realtors. Would they both be doing, would you be asking both of them to study, or just one of them?
No, we just do one. We ready to have Stanfred's study, so we'll get one more. So it kind of gives us a, a third opinion, if you will. We have our internal data and then the two of them.
And so I would request that they look at the immigration trends too.
Right.
And current, you know, I, I know it's, it's never, it's not going to be an exact science. It's a ballpark. I get it. But I think that at least they should be thinking of that when they're doing these studies. And certainly, a crisis can happen around the globe, and all of a sudden, we have thousands of refugees coming, just like what happened in Syria, that could not have been projected, you know, years and years ago. But, but I, at least making sure that they have something like that in their mind while they're doing the study, as well as, you know, specifically saying, you know, are you speaking with our realtors? Because our realtors know our market. And who's coming in? Trustee Lane?
The numbers are so important to everything we decide. I personally, I don't know Middle Cities. Plant Moran, we know mostly as an audit accounting firm. I, if it's a small amount of money, and I don't mean to say that five or $10,000 is insignificant.
No, for that, I'm sorry, it'll be only around 2,000 for that.
Oh, really?
Then we should, we should do both of them. If there's any possibility that they would examine different issues, or they have different specializations. $2,000 makes no difference in the big scheme of these numbers.
You need data. You need data.
We need that. So I would like to ask everybody, are we in favor of, number one, of the studies, and can we decide that right now? I, I would propose to do both of them.
I think we're all in. Is anyone not in favor of it?
Do we need to vote on this?
I don't think we need, for, not for $2,000.
It's a small amount. I'm just trying to poll.
Yeah.
Yeah. The dollar value is small enough, doesn't require any board approval. It's more just giving us a direction to work towards.
So, yeah, we would look for you to get from both of those firms, a study.
Just, just my personal opinion, I mean, just looking at history for the last, I mean, almost three decades now, and just, again, I'm not giving myself a plug here, but being in the business, what I, what I used to see people moving from East Dearborn, going to the Crosswood School District, and we know what happened in that area, I can tell you that most families now, just because of all the great news in Dearborn, just because of what Dearborn Public Schools are doing, they're deciding to stay in Dearborn, and they're moving to the 48128, 48124. Just, that's my personal opinion. For the life of me, I have no clue how we would lose four, 500 students at that level three years from now. But again, it's just my opinion. I'm looking forward to that study.
And I could just add with both those groups, Plant Moran, and obviously they do our audits, they're familiar, they've worked with us. And then we're Middle Cities members, actually. So we get data, we already have access to lots of data through them.
All right. I know you had another slide.
Just a couple. These are, this is a off topic, as you said. School of Choice and Boundary Line Exemptions was another thing that the committee looked at. With regards to School of Choice, again, you know, most of our buildings, even at the elementary and middle school level, are high, high in number as far as population goes. So they're at or near capacity. And it's difficult to accommodate, we get over 600, just depending on the year. Last year, we had a little more than 600 applications. This year, it's still not finished, but we're over 500 and counting as far as applications for School of Choice and Boundary Line Exemptions. So one of the things that happens-
Was it 500? You said 500?
This year, correct, yes. And we're still not finished, this year going into next year. So people will still turn them in all the way through August. So one of the things that the committee thought of is to get rid of School of Choice, even within our district. I know Dr. Maliko was talking about School of Choice for people who don't live in our district earlier, but this is for School of Choice that, for people that live within the district. And then to only allow for Boundary Line Exemptions, and have those even on, on a limited basis, which they already are in a sense, but, you know, making, making sure that people have true hardships, and they're not using that process for convenience or preference, or what have you. So just to kind of tighten up the parameters there, that's one of the proposals. The other options are very simple. We either eliminate both or keep, you know, allow for, that's actually not, not aggregate, but it's allow to, to keep everything the same. So we either eliminate both, keep everything the same, or eliminate School of Choice, and then have limited Boundary Line Exemptions. So those would be the things to discuss.
Are you looking for direction? Is that something that would have to be voted on at a meeting, or just direction?
Just direction.
I think that School of Choice is absolutely wonderful if there's room for students. And I think it's, it's misleading, because it makes people think that they actually have a choice in which schools they go to. And I actually was, somebody stopped me this weekend, and, you know, they were asking me about it. And I said, you know, it would be great for, you know, all your kids to go to this school. Unfortunately, if there's no room, there's no room. And I think we're just not in a position to keep doing that. With that said, I think we have to keep the hardships. There are certain situations in which for students, mental health, or physical well-being, or for whatever purpose it is, they need to be in a different school. And so it would be my recommendation that we eliminate School of Choice, but we keep the hardships. Does anyone else want to speak about that?
I agree. I agree with that.
The School of Choice was intended to be small numbers, when you're telling me it's 500 students moving all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my inclination also.
And I think when it started, I think well over a decade ago, I remember I was an elementary principal, middle school and elementary. It did serve a purpose, but you didn't have these volumes of these numbers of applications. And it was a small number, and it made sense because you did have space. But, I mean, now with the limited amount of Boundary Line Exemptions, one of the things that we discussed too, was just allowing those in specific, you know, obviously you want flexibility, but mainly allowing those only in the schools, again, where you have space, you know, depending on-
What are the numbers with Boundary Line Exemptions? How many of those do we have?
Well, I'm sorry, when I said five, over 500, they included both, correct. Because a lot of times, people apply for School of Choice, and if it's denied, then they put in a Boundary Line Exemption.
Well, that's a whole school. 500, so it's like a whole school moving within the district.
And then trying to keep siblings in the same school, because you might have room in fourth grade, but you don't have room in second grade. So it becomes very difficult to tell parents, well, you have two elementary kids that are going to, be going to two different schools.
Now, would this take effect immediately for the next school year?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Lane, Barry?
Yeah, I have no problem with, I have no problem with what you suggested. But I want to go back. I know there was a parent asked some questions. I believe she might still be here, but if she's not, regarding back to the, to the committee, and I know you're just delivering, you're just delivering the messages. Don't think like we're taking shots.
No, that's okay. You can take all the shots you want.
Parents. My concern is, most of the parents that came up and spoke on a subject were very, very involved. PTA at the local level, and PTA at the district level. And for them to be kind of completely surprised that there was even a committee, I mean, I knew there was a committee, because I was told there was a committee, but for them, how did we put the word out? And this was back, back in November, I would believe?
We started, we started getting people together in November. I think our first meeting was in January, if I remember right.
How many actual meetings did you have as a committee?
Three.
Three, okay. And I heard a question earlier, non-district employees, how many parents were involved in that committee?
We had invited seven different parents. Three accepted the offer, and so that's what we had, was three.
So that's three?
Three and a half. One of them came to one meeting.
Half? How do you, do you have a half a parent?
He came to one meeting. He came to one, I-
Okay, showed up to a meeting. And those three that did get involved, were they district employees that you know of, or?
Uh, one I know was for sure. The other one, I just found out today, was, the other one was not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, you're just delivering the message here. You know how that kind of looks out there for parents that-
Well, I can tell you, we didn't exclude anybody intentionally.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're excluding anybody. Should I direct my questions this way, or are you okay with it?
I'm okay with it all.
Very easy.
No, no, you're good.
One thing, one thing really quick on the, on the committee.
Yes, sir.
Because I did attend on behalf of the board to one of the meetings.
Yes.
One of the things I noticed from the parent's side was, for everybody that was speaking at those committee meetings, it was always coming back to what's in the student's best interest. All the different ideas that were being talked about were always about what is going to be in the best interest of the students moving forward. So just so you know that that was the driving force behind everything.
Thank you.
Just be, I mean, we're actually sharing our thoughts here. I don't want to go backwards, but there was a time in our history where Fortson was overcrowded. We started busing students to another part of the city. We're at a point right now where we have two buildings that are overcrowded, that are overcrowded. One is like very, very overcrowded. I don't know how many people have actually spent time in the building, in between hours, when you, when that bell rings, if you're in the hallway. And I'm sure, you know, we have a couple principals here that can probably tell us. But the idea, I mean, it's obvious, yeah. The kids are moving like this, and behavior issues show up. Then I just had a student that was, I was told there was a student at Dearborn High that was suspended for being tardy, and his excuse was he's trying to get to the next class, but that's, I don't want to get off subject here. But, so it's the idea of busing more kids, now to create a crowding issue at our third building, just bothers the heck out of me. I think, I'm glad we slowed down. I'm just glad we're gonna have this long, long discussion. And I think, you know, we need to talk about possibly a ninth grade academy, or, you know, with the right data, or maybe a fourth high school, just to, just to keep kicking the can down the road, say, okay, four years from now, we'll revisit it. It's very, very difficult. I mean, Fortson, if you're looking at your numbers right here, not my numbers, your numbers, Fortson, and by 2020, 2021, is going to get back to where it was last year, pretty much. So I know time is of the essence here, but-
Are you talking about without the boundary changes?
Without doing anything.
Yeah.
Without doing anything. We're back to where we started. So, and it's been, we've been doing some good work at that building. That's two great leaders for the last, you know, six, seven years, and we're doing okay. So the sense of urgency to start creating chaos, you know, and, and, and we know what happened, you know, at the board retreat, that, you know, there was, you know, media, and we welcome media to, you know, to our meetings, and full accountability. And the fact that it was out there and just threw everybody in a loop. I'm sure everybody's phones and emails and everything, and they started coming in. It's like, what's going on here? That's not a fun subject. And I know this couple of people, a couple of my colleagues here have sat through this. It's not a fun subject to talk about, start moving. I buy a house in one area, because that's where I want my kids to go to. All of a sudden, you're telling me that you're gonna bus more kids into my, you know, to, people claim it's their school, you're gonna bus more kids in my school. It, it creates, creates a little chaos in people's lives. Okay, so I'm glad that we kind of slowed down, and we're gonna be discussing this further, and looking forward to the studies, and actually having data in front of me where we can make some good, solid decisions. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. And just to let everyone know, we're three minutes away from having to extend the meeting. All right?
I'll talk really fast, and nobody else say anything. Board of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence. I think we probably all got emails.
Yes, we've, and I think we've kind of talked about those emails as well. Next item?
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
I'll speak on behalf of the Policy Committee. Today, we had a meeting, and we discussed a couple of different items, one of which was the United States Department of Agriculture have set basically a new policy into implementation on wellness. The district is currently working on taking what the USDA drafted and putting it into our guidelines. And we basically already have guidelines in place, but we're tightening it up to make sure that we, that we have the same guidelines in place as the USDA. During our Policy Committee, I'm proud to say that we do have a draft at this point of our welcoming resolution. I know we discussed it last time briefly, and Dr. Maliko had commented on it. And hopefully, we'll have that up on, as an agenda item to vote on for the board. And we're still just making some changes, so when it's ready, we will publish it. We all-
That will actually be a discussion item at our next board meeting. We have two board meetings in June, and then hopefully, after the board discusses it at our first meeting, at our second meeting in June, it should be an agenda item.
And we'd hope to get feedback from everyone and from the community. You know, this resolution is very important to us. We already passed one at the college. We also, as to the Policy Committee, I think we've covered-
Thanks. So, okay.
Just the, just the hiring, H R hire was the only other thing that we-
Oh, yes. We are looking at our policies in terms of defining what a relative is, just to make sure. I think the policy was a little vague before, where a relative could not be supervised, or could not supervise, district employee can't supervise a relative. And so the question is, what is a relative? And, and just kind of discussing that, clearly defining that. I mean, it can be a first cousin, it could be a third cousin, it could be a brother or sister. And so just clarifying some of that language, and we'll have that available and sent to the remainder of the board members with, you know, to everyone prior to the next board meeting, as well as the welcoming resolution, and the policy with the USDA.
Thank you. And I'm the chair of the-
The Policy Committee meeting.
The superintendent evaluation?
Oh, the superintendent evaluation. Oh, that was, I'm the chair of that, sorry. We also met for the superintendent evaluation. I believe we're almost complete with that. We just have one more evaluation, and then hopefully, we'll have the results of that at our next board meeting. So, thank you. Any other committee meetings? All right, next item?
Board Members Superintendent-
Oh, stop, we have to do a motion.
Now, extend the meeting 15 minutes?
Seconded.
We have to go to a roll call vote.
Jim's about to push Mary's chair away.
Trustee Bazzy?
Yes.
Trustee Barry? Trustee Hamud?
Very reluctant, yes.
Trustee Lane? Trustee Mead?
Yes.
Trustee Petledge Coffey, yes. Trustee Thorpe? Let's go, we want to move. All right, next item. Now, I'm- Board, Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Anyone want to speak?
Just a little quick.
Trustee Barry?
You know, I know Dr. Maliko mentioned how, what an awesome evening it was at the Superintendent Honors Night. We have some amazing educators, teachers, and the whole nine yards. But I was happy to see that there was at least one tennis coach, a wrestling coach. What else was there? There was a field of coaches-
There was council, school counselors. Kindergarten teacher.
Kindergarten, yeah, it was wonderful. And you're right, the coach is a role model. And I said this in my opening speech, you know, that is not necessarily about, that's about the relationships and the positive role models that these adults have played in the lives of these students. And those students are so appreciative. So it is, it's a wonderful celebration.
On the campaign trail a few months, I mean, seems like a few months ago, it was a long time ago, I mentioned that coaches are teachers too, and somebody just snapped on him. He's, what are you talking about? Listen, explain that basketball courts are a classroom, the music room is a classroom, and this person didn't get it, and it just backed out.
Well, I wouldn't be sitting here today if it wasn't for my coaching hockey, because I was looking at a different, so, coaching is definitely a good connection.
Trustee Thorpe?
Right on, on back of what Trustee Barry said, I joked with Dr. Maliko about the event, that I spent three hours there shaking hands. And I have no problem spending three hours shaking hands of teachers. If the students have done well enough and want to recognize a teacher, I'd do it all day. Because it's great to be able to thank those teachers, because like was said earlier, they don't get enough thanks.
That is true.
You're right about that.
And we actually had one of our big award winners, Mrs. Ayew, been here tonight.
You definitely don't get enough thanks on their paycheck, that's for sure.
Trustee Lane?
I just wanted to ask Dr. Maliko to remind the high school principals, I'm sure they're already on this, but I remember a few years ago, when a student that I knew could not walk in the graduation for misbehavior. And it's spring, everybody feels great, they want to be outside, but there needs to be a reminder to all the graduating seniors that people, we don't allow students to walk if there are problems with their behavior. So if the principals could reinforce that, because every family wants to see their student walk, and we don't want any dumb pranks that would make somebody ineligible. So.
That's true.
A word to the wise.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else?
Just quick, quickly, very quickly. I know it's late. I'll do it quick. Just, uh, thank you. Well, it's late, okay, we're good, before the vote. Dear One Education Foundation, the, the event on May 16th is coming up, and so we've been really working hard. That money goes back to the classrooms, as everybody's aware. Want to mention that. Excited to be there. The other thing I just want to mention is that Dr. Mead and I went last week to the M A S B Assembly in Lansing, and we went into the legislator and met with legislation, legislators, excuse me, specifically talking about some different things. It's a great network with M A S B. I think we have great relationships with our state legislators here. And so they hear us. And so a lot of funding issues of, funding issue was the biggest thing that came up, you know, talked about different requirements and things. But I just wanted to say that it's well worth it. And I know last year, Trustee McDonald had went with me, so it's just very important to be affiliated with M A S B, and just to be able to do those things and go to the Capitol. So, thank you.
And talking about our- And talking about our legislation, um, I, I, I do wanna thank Sylvia Santana for, she stuck it out for the honors night for the full three hours as well. And, um, shaking hands of, uh, students and teachers as well. Um, she happens to be my state rep, as Dearborn has two. Um, so, um, she actually covers a very small territory in Dearborn for the most part, but she, but she did bless her heart stand on stage with the rest of us, so.
And I was able to get myself with Representative Hamud up on the gallery. We just have our thing, right?
Um, okay, now, any other commentary? Next item.
Request for information and our future agenda items.
Trustee Lane?
I'm looking at the website, and I looked at it earlier. There is a correction to be made. We have a meeting listed, May twenty-second. And I think that's an old calendar. It says, uh, Board of Education Meeting, H F. Am I wrong about that? The H F C Board Meeting is, um, the fifteenth.
Should be May fifteenth, yeah.
And then it says, May twenty-second, Board Meeting, H F C C. So, I don't know what happened there, but.
Trustee Barry?
I have, I had a list of things, but I'm not in trouble with Mary here. But this is not a request, this is a reminder. At one of the college meetings, I know Dr. Jensen is still in the room here. You know, I don't think it's fair. You go to his meetings in an hour, hour and a half, he sends you home. You got him sitting here till ten thirty. But, uh, what I'm referring to is the remedial classes that our students have taken. I know we're look, I'm looking forward to that report at the college, but, uh, just kinda reminder that Wayne State and, uh, U of M Dearborn. And, and the reason, I was told that when you ask for information, you should from now on ask why you're asking. The reason I'm asking for that is because our graduation rates are up there. I just wanna make sure that diploma that we're handing out has value.
Means something, yeah.
So just a reminder. You were at that meeting when I asked for that, so.
Yeah, okay.
It was a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, Dr. Mead?
Before we read the future meeting dates, is it true, Dr. Jensen, we're not meeting in June?
No, we are meeting in June, but July.
We're not meeting in June?
No, in July, in July. We have a June meeting.
All right, it's just not mentioned, right?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it's not mentioned here, but it is the following week from June twelve. Yes, yes. We have actually three meetings in June. The second, third, and fourth Monday.
Trustee Thorpe just found that out.
What's the fourth?
I'm not here.
Too late to change your mind.
What's going on?
I'm already out of town.
The fourth Monday, there's two, uh, P twelve board meetings in June because of all the business that we have to take care of.
Budget and stuff.
Before the end of the budget year.
All right.
All right. Any other items? All right, next item.
Uh, future meeting dates. Monday, May fifteenth, twenty seventeen, H F C Policy Committee Meeting, six P M. At the Andrew Mazzara Services and Conference Center in the President's Conference Room, Henry Ford College. Monday, May fifteenth, twenty seventeen, H F C Meeting, seven P M. At the Andrew Mazzara Services and Conference Center in the Rosenob Boardroom, Henry Ford College. Monday, June twelfth, twenty seventeen, P twelve Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.